Welcome to the March, welcome to the March 2nd Bryan City Council Meeting and thank you for attending. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the February 17th, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Second agenda items, hearing of public concerns, residents are, five minutes if you have any here. Go ahead.
See, my name is Clarence Wheeler and I have Jackie Blues here in Bryan. I was here for the first meeting two weeks ago, which seemed to be very emotionally charged by many people. I've always said that a lot of emotionally charged presentations should not be taken. I need to take a few steps back and look at things as a business owner and as a business. And it's never a good thing to do things emotionally. So I didn't say anything the last meeting, as some people were surprised that I didn't. I'm going to start off by saying that I'm not for it, nor am I against it. But I am not convinced it's a good fit for Bryan. The fabric of Bryan has been made over many, many years. I say the layout of Bryan is interesting, the fact that the courthouse, of course, a lot of cities in the middle, everything built around it. But the courthouse is a sticking point for me, is the fact that it's county-owned and not owned by the city of Bryan. So I don't believe, and I could be wrong, but I don't believe you can have alcohol on the property or in the property. That's an issue. Because if you're going to have alcohol on the street, it's going to be easy to take it right across the street. Is that illegal? Yes. But like I said, my sticking point is that courthouse, unless the county commissioners are going to change their view of it, or maybe it should be put on a ballot. I don't know. My building is a landlocked building. In other words, I can't do anything more to it. I already rent a spot for my car and for my dumpster. So for a patio for me is out of the question. Cora's I know has a patio, Father John's, Grand Plaza, they all have patios so you could sit outside and have a cocktail or a beer or a glass of wine. You can't with me. So I still don't see the idea of walking a quarter of a block to go from one restaurant to another that you need that glass of wine. I question that. But I think, like I said, once again, the fabric of Bryan, I know Mr. Swanson mentioned Lithuania when he went and it was just nice to go out, and I understand that, but that was made hundreds of years ago. Bryan was not hundreds of years ago, but it's laid out differently, and I say Bryan is laid out incorrectly for this idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bert.
Now, just step right up, say your name.
My name is Jane Tucker and I own the home, my sister and I own the home of 233 South Beach Street, which happens to be in the historical section of Bryan. I have to say Bryan is a quaint town and Bryan has done some very nice things. That home has been our home since 1964, when my parents moved to Bryan and bought the bar, bought a bar, which was the pastime at that time, which is now where the little Mexican restaurant is up on the square. Now, I'm going to say that on this Dora issue, I wasn't here for the last meeting because I was unaware that it was happening, or it was being, or I would have been. However, when my mother owned a bar and she was responsible for the people who were drinking, who she sold her alcohol to, if they were to leave this establishment and something happened to them, she was responsible for that. So my question is, when this, if this gets voted in and happens, who, who's going to be responsible for things like that if something bad happens? I don't know what the purpose, what the chamber is hoping to bring in, if they're hoping to get more businesses or so forth. I don't, you can tell I'm not against alcohol. My mother and dad owned a bar for Pete's sake and made a living from it. However, we have a school right down the street and this world isn't the same as it was back in the day. Probably back when my mother owned the bar, this would have been more, more feasible because people were more responsible. We don't live in a responsible world right now. So what I'm saying to you is that's an awful big area that they want Dora in. I don't know what the purpose of it is. I think it's a bad idea. I think if something bad happens, I want to know who's responsible. Are they going to hire more police officers for, for wandering and making sure people aren't dumping their trash? I just think Bryan is asking for more trouble with this and I just appreciate you guys listening to me, but I'm not, I'm not in favor of it. And I hope you guys understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
There's one person. I'm going to go next.
Introduce myself first. I'm James Fenner. I am chairman of the Eagles Donation Committee, Secretary of the Bryan Eagle Riders, and Chairman of the Eagles Trial Committee, in charge of discipline down there. I'm not going to throw any numbers out, everybody knows what the Eagles does. The Dora would increase our ability to raise funds, which then goes back to the community. The Riders, for example, what I have seen, the Riders could use the back parking lot for functions, cookouts and such, which now we would have to get a special permit and go through and get it approved, and it is costly venture, and most time we would raise nothing by the time it got done. With the Dora, we would have the ability to raise funds. Discipline, Eagle members misbehave while they're in the section that would include the Eagles property. They would, it ended up either in front of me or a trustee to face whatever actions we think is appropriate. I think the Dora, if done properly, would be good for the community. We could bring people in. I've gone down to Napoleon for the Rib Fest, actually a bunch of you could ride down there just for that. And the idea is if we do this, we can get people to ride in or come in, cruise in, I think you would increase that greatly. That's basically what I'm saying is it would be an ability to bring people in and raise funds in the long run. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you. Say there was another one.
Michael. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Michael LaRoe. I'm a local young person here in Bryan. It is estimated that for 2019 and 2020, the academic year, there's going to be just shy of four million new college graduates in the U.S. My question for Council is, how do we attract these young professionals to Bryan and fall in love with our beautiful downtown? One of many things that I've learned when I was in college was that for a company to be successful, they must always be innovating, and the proposed Dora District is a fantastic opportunity for Bryan to innovate. The proposed district will differentiate our community from those surrounding us. Businesses such as Bard Manufacturing or Spangler Candy could recruit young professionals on college campuses, showing that Bryan is not afraid of change and in fact embraces the future. The Dora District is also appealing to new businesses looking for somewhere fun to start. So think about the potential jobs that could be created from a new sports bar opening downtown that needs an accountant and shift managers, or a trendy microbrewery startup from a young entrepreneur looking to start a family in Bryan. Not only that, but the possibility of increased sales revenue of downtown establishments from the increased patronage and foot traffic. Dora isn't just entertainment for millennials. Imagine if you would, a warm Thursday evening in August, you head to Cora's after work and while you're there, you run into an old friend. It's gorgeous outside, so instead of staying indoors, you both decide to check out the car show. It's convertible night and you both remember cruising around town in your 67 Mustang, both listening to Bruce Springsteen. You grab your favorite wine or beer in an approved Dora cup, of course. You head over to the Cruisin' and reminisce about the good old days, and maybe after the car show, go to Grand Plaza, have dinner, and enjoy a margarita on a front patio with good company. These are all different possibilities if this is implemented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hello. My name's Ashley. I think in regards to, I'm sorry, I forget your name, I'm all full of names. Yes, yes. With the liability for when people leave the bar and who would be liable, I think, I don't know, but isn't that only if you over-serve someone in the establishment is liable? I don't know that it's if they, I think it probably depends on the severity of what happens. Regarding the, you don't need a glass of wine to walk across the street. I mean, I don't know that this is really geared for people just wander around regularly, which I mean, you might have a few of those, but I think the most people are going to use this is during events. And then it'll allow, maybe might spark some other ideas for other people to have events, you know, and it'll just kind of snowball from there. And I think Bryan too, back in the 1800s, 18 to 1920, something like that, they had open containers, you could walk around town and carry alcohol. Obviously, it must have been, you know, before the prohibition or something of that sort. But anyway, and then I just think it's more geared towards events and people coming to our events and getting people from outside communities coming to our events, and then possibly attracting additional businesses because of the splurge in attendance at events. I think that's just my two cents on that.
Thank you.
Ashley.
Hi. My name is Mary Grimmon Prey. And I really don't understand why you just can't keep all this stuff around the courthouse, around the square. I don't understand why you have to bring all of this stuff to people's homes in their neighborhood. You know, I, I am not very happy about having my kids on my porch and watching people walk down my sidewalk with drinks in their hand. You know, I've lived in Bryan for a very long time and I really don't understand why you have to have something like this, because drinking isn't good. And I think you've got some pretty hard drinkers here in Bryan. And you know, you guys act like these people are going to walk around and have some casual drinks and ha, ha, ha. But I'm sorry, but I've, I've worked in a bar, I see how people can get, and I see how they are out in public, and I do not understand why Bryan, that is such a wonderful town to live in, that you guys would want people walking all around this big area for drinking. You know? I understand these people who are bar owners, trying to get people to come into their bar. Fine, have a patio, have it out there in their parking lot, that's fine. Leave it where you're at. You do not need to bring it to people's neighborhoods where they have children, people playing outside. And you know, when people start drinking, how nasty they can get? Because I've seen that too. And I don't need people yelling at me on my porch or being sarcastic or whatever, how they get. And I'm sure that you people here know how drinkers can get. But I'm very against this, and I really hope, you know, the world is in bad shape as it is, do we need to have people who drink walking around our town? Why don't you just have these people who are on drugs just selling stuff on the, I mean, drugs are drugs. Is it alcohol, marijuana, or whatever? I think you people need to think pretty big on this. This is a biggie, especially for me, who lives in that neighborhood. And I really thank you for listening to me, and I'm sorry because I am a little bit kind of teed up, but I don't know if any of you people are living or are going to be living in where these people are going to be walking around, but I am one of them people and I'm not very happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
I do.
Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Sandy Huffman and I'm a cashier at the elementary school cafeteria. I didn't expect to say anything, but I'm against Dora. This town has been known for being a quaint, pretty, nice town to live in. People admire it. You bring something like this in for these bar owners, I'm not, I mean, I used to drink, I don't drink anymore, but I know how people are when they drink, just like she said. And as far as the car shows, you've got thousands of dollars in their car, you don't want somebody walking around with a drink sloshing it on your car. I mean, people are fussy about those cars. They're not going to be happy about having Dora, I don't believe. I don't know, I haven't talked to any of them, except one, my husband. But anyway, I just, you're, this town is known as that. It's known as a pretty little town and you, it's just going to take that away from it. It's just going to be like all the other ones that are like that. You know, you're just a place to drink and, and whatever, and it doesn't stop at drinking. Stop, we already have a drug problem, so that's just, I just wanted to say my feelings about it because I didn't want to sit back there and have everybody think I was agreeing with it, but I'm not. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Sandy.
Mrs. Tucker, what's your name? It's your call. She only used two minutes. She's got about three.
Hello. Jess is up here.
My name's Jess Hagman. I'm from Bryan. I really came in here because I was more concerned about BPA being dissolved, let's get rid of it. But that's another story, but since we're on Dora, I really think that it's a great idea. I really like the idea and I hope you guys are really going to go for this. One of my ideas I thought would be a really kind of a good idea for people like that or a little bit, what I call snub-nosed Bryaniets, that really think the worst of people like us, but we're descendants of Germans, we're drinkers, we like to have our beer, we like to have our alcohol. If it was a possibility that we could get maybe a trolley car like Spangler has, that does their little tours and that, I mean, we could do a little touring, you know, and bus these people down to Father John's or from Cora's or to Father John's new railroad station that he's going to have, another microbrewery. But we just got to get a little more innovative, I think, is what we got to do. BPA, I think, yeah, let's get rid of them. I mean, let's, let's just get them out. We could save $45,000. I know it sounds like peanuts. You add that up over 10 years' time, that's a half a million dollars almost. And I'm not even mentioning severance pay that we have to pay, you know, when they're done. And what's that going to look like in five or 10 years when they're out of here? You know, I know it's, it's like, you know, pitting neighbor against neighbor, as Mr. Hoopie said, but no, I disagree. You know, I, I know Mr. Long, I used to have talks with him on my way to school, private school. I'd walk across, cut across the little trail, cross Lynn Creek, have little talks with him, back in the 70s. I know Karen Ford when she lived at home with her parents, nice people. Let's, let's combine, let's get this done. We've come this far, let's not shut it down now. I would really like to have a vote on it. We never get to vote. Let the people decide, not just you. We did, we did elect intelligible people, Ms. Harris. Let's make the right choice. Let's do this. Let's give the people the chance to vote. We're this far, let's do it. I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Jess. Yeah, the two, the two minutes? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Jane Tucker here again. First of all, I'm not a, I'm just a lowlife here in Bryan, Ohio. I'm not what Mr. Hagman said I was, but I just forgot to tell you that I went, my sister and I went to Napoleon last week and we started out at Spangler's and we had lunch and we started asking them what they thought of Dora. And we talked to people in the community, and there's three categories I wanted to share with you. One category is some of the, the people didn't know anything about it. Some of the people said they hate it. And the third group of people said it's just a small group of cliques that like to go, the little clique that drinks, and they go bar to bar, but there's really only three bars close to Napoleon and the rest of them are a little distance. So those people probably get in their car and go to the next bar, they probably don't walk. I just wanted to let you guys know that I did go to Napoleon and I asked those folks different, different areas of the town what they thought, and there's, either they hated it, didn't know about it, or they said it's just a small clique of people who like to do that. Just wanted to share that with you. Was that two minutes, John?
You're good.
It was 50 seconds if you wanted to. So you're, you're fine. You're fine.
By the way, your brother is one of my favorite humans.
Yep.
He should be here too.
Okay.
I'm Ken Upwing. For the people that are concerned about the, I understand that there's a lot of concern about what's going to happen with criminal activity, all that kind of stuff. And the last time we were here, there was a guy from Napoleon who was here, who kind of spearheaded their Dora. And he said that they, they were having regular meetings, got together to check, to see what was going on, how the community was responding. And one of the things that he said was they saw no increase. And my wife actually talked to the defiance people there, the, what was it, the police chief, I think, and the fire, the fire chief, and they confirmed kind of the same thing. They saw no, there was no uptick, uptick in criminal activity, no, you know, anything that could be associated with, like, the public intoxication, littering, you know, anything like that, trespassing, they never saw that. And they were meeting every month and then every couple months to see if they were going to get that, because they had all the same concerns that all people here have. And I understand that, you know, because it's something new, you know, is it going to work? I don't know. It's a living document, it's not set in stone. Those areas that you're concerned about, that's not set in stone. Like Bob said, the last meeting that we were at, it's not a hill we want to die on, the people that want this. Those can be moved, the times can be moved, all that stuff can be changed. It can be changed as we're doing it. It's not something that you can just say, this is it and that's it. Work with it and make it work so that it will work for everyone in the community. So is it the greatest thing ever? I don't know, we haven't done it yet, but we won't know if we don't try. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all the comments and they are appreciated and they do have an impact, so thank you. Agenda item three, an ordinance providing for annual appropriation for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency. Lori, could you please?
Yes.
Ordinance number eight, 2020, an ordinance providing for annual appropriation for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for $75,000 for revolving loan fund for a loan.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Agenda item four, an ordinance to place on the ballot for electoral consideration and amendment to the charter of the city of Bryan to dissolve the elected board of public affairs and to bring the Bryan municipal utilities under the direction and supervision of the Bryan mayor and Bryan city council. I'd like, first, I need a motion to take the ordinance 462019 off the table that we put on October.
Does it, Lori, you have to number and read?
Not yet. I've already got that, thank you though.
Okay.
And I appreciate that, but no, I, they gave me the protocol, I need to, I need to get it off the table first. So what I need is a motion to take 462019 off and bring it back on the table so we can vote on it.
So moved.
I'll second. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Now we go. Lori, could you please, please read ordinance 462019?
Ordinance 46, 2019, an ordinance to place on the ballot for electoral consideration and amendment to the charter of the city of Bryan to dissolve the elected board of public affairs and to bring the Bryan municipal utilities under the direction and supervision of the Bryan mayor and Bryan city council.
Thank you. I continue to feel it's imperative that an issue as fundamental as the governance structure of their city should be brought before those residents for their vote. May I have a motion to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 462019?
I'll move. Now, does this have?
No. Yeah, you can still.
This doesn't have to be suspended?
No.
No, because you've had the third reason.
This is the third reason. Okay. Then I move to, for that motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
I want to, I want to say something before I vote.
This is just to put it back for vote.
This is just to put it back for vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Put it to on the ballot.
Put it on the ballot.
To put it on the ballot, correct?
Yes.
This is our final vote?
Yes.
Okay. I want to say something before I vote. I think this is something that needs to be looked at. I think it's something that needs to be revisited. Jess, I'm with you on this, but I think that throughout this process, it's been a bit of a moving target and I don't think that now is the time. But one of the things that I really need to, I really feel is, right now, we're looking at 2020 and I, we need to look at this from a 2030, 2050, 2070 perspective. But because I don't think now is the time, I'm going to vote no.
I, I misunderstood.
No, we aren't voting yet. That was just a.
No, we did vote, yeah. It was a vote.
Oh, it wasn't.
This is the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to change my vote to no then. I do not.
So then you couldn't.
I do not want to dissolve the BPA.
You raised the motion. You raised the motion, but you vote how you choose.
Yeah.
Okay.
She just raised the motion.
She just raised, that's what I thought, we were on the motion.
No, she raised the motion, but then she voted yes.
And that's what I, I was voting that the motion was going to be put up for us to vote. That's what I was thinking. I misunderstood.
That's okay, I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody confused.
Well, I was.
No, we'll do it right.
Okay.
We'll make sure.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, Rhonda.
We'll do it right. So how do you want to proceed here?
I feel best to have Lori redo the roll call.
Starting with Judy and then Jim and then Rick, Mary and then you.
For the vote.
For the vote to put it on the ballot, yes.
Yes, okay. So we good with what we're voting on here? Okay.
Judy?
Then I want to vote no.
Jim?
No.
Rick?
No.
Mary?
No.
John?
Yes.
Now we go. Lori, could you please, please read ordinance 462019?
Ordinance 46, 2019, an ordinance to place on the ballot for electoral consideration and amendment to the charter of the city of Bryan to dissolve the elected board of public affairs and to bring the Bryan municipal utilities under the direction and supervision of the Bryan mayor and Bryan city council.
Thank you. I continue to feel it's imperative that an issue as fundamental as the governance structure of their city should be brought before those residents for their vote. May I have a motion to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 462019?
I'll move. Now, does this have?
No. Yeah, you can still.
This doesn't have to be suspended?
No.
No, because you've had the third reason.
This is the third reason. Okay. Then I move to, for that motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
I want to, I want to say something before I vote.
This is just to put it back for vote.
This is just to put it back for vote?
Yes.
Okay.
But one of the things that I really need to...I really feel is, right now, we're looking at 2020, and we need to look at this from a 2030, 2050, 2070 perspective. But because I don't think now is the time, I'm gonna vote no.
Hi, I misunderstood.
No, we aren't voting yet, that was just a...
No, we did vote, yeah. It was a vote.
Oh, it wasn't a vote.
This is the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to change my vote to no then. I do not...
So then you couldn't...
I do not want to dissolve the BPA.
She raised the motion. You raised the motion, but you vote how you choose.
Yeah.
Okay.
She just raised the motion.
She just raised...that's what I thought, we were on the motion.
No, she raised the motion, but then she voted yes.
And that's what I...I was voting that the motion was going to be put up for us to vote. That's what I was thinking, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay, I don't want anybody confused.
Well, I was.
No, we'll do it right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, Rhonda.
We'll do it right. So how do you want to proceed here?
I feel best to have Laurie redo the roll call.
Starting with Judy, and then Jim, and then Rick, Mary, and then you.
For the vote?
For the vote to put it on the ballot, yes.
Yes, okay. So we good with what we're voting on here? Okay.
Judy? Then I want to vote no. Jim?
No.
Rick?
No.
Mary?
No.
John?
Agenda, agenda item five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bryan Excavating LLC for the project known as South William Street Water Main Replacement Project 2020. Laurie, please read.
Ordinance number nine, 2020, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bryan Excavating LLC for the project known as South William Street Water Main Replacement Project 2020.
Good evening. Two weeks ago, the Board of Public Affairs met and they did their appropriations and whatnot for this project and awarded it, and now I'm here doing the same thing with you guys. Just a little history, we applied for Ohio Public Works grant. We did receive $275,000 towards the total project. Total project cost is around $690,000. We split the grant funds percentage-wise to the project. The city will get $31,000 approximately, I'm just rounding off of grant funds. We'll have about $47,000 out of our funds that will go, out of our budgetary funds, that'll go towards paving on the project, because there's a few streets we're paving. The utilities, as far as the water department goes, are gonna receive about $243,000 of the grant funds as a repayment, and about $368,000 out of their budget to cover the balance of the project. So with that, I would request you suspend the rules and authorize us to proceed with this project.
Motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Very much.
Agenda item number six, a resolution ratifying the agreement between the city of Bryan and local union 245, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers for the Bryan Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Resolution number 12, 2020, a resolution ratifying the agreement between the city of Bryan and the local union number 245 of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers for this Bryan wastewater treatment plant.
As Laurie said, it's an agreement ratification for the contracts, three-year contracts. It was pretty straightforward, we didn't run into any snags, it was up and down pretty quick. Everybody was in agreement, I have no issues with the contract. And if you're in agreement, I urge you to go ahead and ratify it.
And council, I'd just like to make a note that this was the contract that got delayed till the beginning of the year. So Jim Kozemplek and John Betts were your representatives in the negotiations.
Very well, by the way.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Agenda, agenda item number seven, a resolution providing for inter-fund advances.
Resolution number 13, 2020, a resolution providing for inter-fund cash advances. This is an advance from the half percent income tax fund of $31,476.10 to the 415 South William Street project, as city engineer Wheelan previously mentioned, as well as a transfer, an advance of $243,523.90 from the water department fund to the 415 South William Street project. Total amount of the advance requested is $275,000, and that'll be the amount that'll be reimbursed from the Ohio Public Works Commission grant.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
That was a motion to suspend.
That was a motion to suspend. So now we can approve, we'll just change the wording.
We don't have to suspend.
Neither.
Yeah.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Item eight, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending March 31st, 2020.
Ordinance number 10, 2020, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending March 31st, 2020. This is a transfer request from the half percent income tax fund of $47,598.70 to the 415 South William Street project. A transfer of $368,261.10 from the water reserve capital fund to the South William Street project. A transfer of $400,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 general fund for general spending purposes. A transfer of $100,000 from the half percent income tax fund to the police-fire building debt retirement fund. And a transfer of $260,000 from the fire department fund to the 305 police-fire building debt retirement fund. Total amount of transfers requested, $1,175,859.80.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Number nine, Mr. Nostrom, commission to repose street department.
At the last council meeting, you approved the hiring of Zach Williams as a vehicle operator trainee. He's since decided that he doesn't want that job, so I need to repost that position of vehicle operator trainee.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Request for civil service, Chief Japp.
Hello? I am requesting to give a civil service test for a patrolman for the city of Bryan Police Department. The last test was given on November 2nd, 2019. It was the ending date, it was November 2nd. We only had four that we could look at. Two were taken off the list, one was given a part-time job and waiting for him to get out of the academy. And the fourth one's gonna be carried over to the new list. So we're requesting a civil service.
Big motion.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Agenda item 12, it's building permits.
How many do you go, 11 with appointments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So council, we are respectfully requesting that you appoint me for Mommy Valley Planning Organization's executive council. That is something that the mayor's position holds. And we meet at minimum quarterly in Defiance, so I am respectfully requesting that you approve that designation.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now building permits.
Okay, I have two different building permits, I don't know if you want to act on them together or not, it makes me no difference, but I can explain them both, you can decide afterwards. Nostrom Laboratories, they're doing a 1.496 million dollar building addition. We previously approved a CRA for them last September, October, in that range. If you ask why we're finally doing the building permit, they finally got their final plan approved. We typically don't approve the building permit until they get a final. They had a partial, but there were some corrections or whatnot necessary. So we finally have all that paperwork and we're able to process it. The other one, the property owner Spangler Candy, but it's actually the Activate Clinic inside. They're doing some remodeling, adding a few more offices, exam rooms and whatnot. That's about $96,000 worth of construction cost. So I request you approve both of these building permits.
Do you want to do them both?
Yes.
Nostrom, is that manufacturing space, is that office space, do you know?
Storage.
Storage?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve both of these building permits.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 13 is the annual reports, Tyson.
Good evening, again. Tonight we'll go over 2019 for the street department, quickly. It says the winter of 2019, but it's actually the end of '18, beginning of '19, last winter. We purchased 779.52 tons of salt with a cost of $97,667.49. And we sprayed 26,150 gallons of brine at a cost of $1,467. There's a list of our employees, which two of those, Aaron Mavis and Jose Vasquez, are no longer at the street department, but they were in 2019, that's why they're still on there. And there's two more at recycling now that weren't there in 2019. That's just a list of the routine jobs of the street department. One highlight on there, last year, we, along with the electric department, cut down 37 terrorist trees in the city. And we use 2,500 gallons of emulsion in the sewer patcher, which that's what the machine we pull behind the dump truck to fill pot holes. That's just the map, trash map. Last year, we took 3,561 tons of trash to the landfill. And that's combined the weekly and monthly all trash pickup. It cost us $301,061, with the average cost of $84.54 a ton. That's the same information in a bar graph. Last year at Combs Grove Cemetery, we had 42 burials, and we poured 18 foundations for the headstones. And here is the recycling for 2019. They sorted and sold 972,235 pounds of recyclable, and they broke down in that pie chart. And then everything that they sold brought in $76,963. Which last year, the smallest piece of the pie was plastic, pound-wise, but it was the largest in sales. That's all I have, any questions?
The recycling does not make us money, correct? I mean, it's not a profitable... I think some people have this misconception that we are making money on the recycling, and that is not the case.
I don't have the exact number, which I can get for you if you want it. That 923,000 pounds that we sold, we didn't take to the landfill, so that's added in. And the 76,000 that we did sell, if you add those two together, it doesn't cover the six employees that work there. So, and the equipment and fuel, no, we don't. We're not in the blacket in the recycling business. It's always in the red. Any suggestions?
Yeah, we actually, Tyson and I go quite a bit to Berners-Berg for a solid waste management meeting that we are required to go to by law, that we are required to recycle. It's a contract that we don't really have an out in. It's an environmental-friendly way to reduce waste, and we know that it costs us money, but we also know that it saves in environmental issues, that's the hope.
And we meet our goal, the state mandated goal, percentage-wise of what we need to recycle, we meet that every year. But, I mean, the money's not...the money's not there.
We're not getting rich off of it.
No. And it's like that across the country.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
2019 report. Happy to say we don't have a lot to report this year, it was a pretty quiet year. Just didn't really do anything but our normal maintenance there. We did a couple of small projects that I'm gonna just show you some quick pictures on, give you kind of an idea of what the guys do out there during the day. The overview that you see every year, it's probably starting to look familiar to you. You'll notice in the northern side of things there, this is a 2015 Google Earth shot, so it does not have the UV structure that we built on it at this point. Someday they'll update it and we'll get a look at it, but it won't be this year. Quick operational notes, 735.5 million gallons of water through the plant in 2019. That's down about 20 million gallons from the year before. No specific reason, as far as I could tell, it's probably weather mostly, you know, and how much rain we get. Daily average was just over 2 million gallons a day, and we moved 1.732 million gallons of Class B sludge through our dewatering unit. And all of that, once it's dried out, turns into 229 tons of Class A bio solids. That all gets taken by a local farmer, used beneficially on the field. This is the biggest project that we had in 2019, and what you're looking at is the beginnings of the contractors getting ready to move that 46-foot digester lid out that we demoed in 2019. Hooked up to it there and just starting to lift, that's a 300-ton crane. It's about all that that crane could do to get the lid out of there. Some of you remember, all of you probably remember, the project in 2017 and 2018. This was just kind of the finale of all of that, it was the last piece of the puzzle. That's the lid setting on the ground. This isn't the greatest shot in the world, but what you see there is the crab claw end of the excavator that they used to demo the lid up. And it's basically, again, just kind of like a crab claw. And they just pinched through the metal, cut it into pieces, and took it to the scrapyard. That's a little better shot, it's kind of bright in here, so it's hard to see, but they're really destroying the lid at that point. Another small item that we did in 2019 was replace a 35-year-old radiator on our plant backup generator. The generator, the engine that that's hooked to is a 725 horsepower turbo diesel cat diesel engine. And the radiator that was there was the original set that came with the generator and engine itself. And it was starting to develop some really small leaks, and obviously this is a critical piece of equipment there if we lose power. So that was one of the projects we decided we were gonna tackle this year. Kind of another look at it is we're getting things plumbed up and welded there. And guys are adding the antifreeze to it at this point. That's just a quick peek at the engine itself inside the building. This is another small project, which is just kind of an example of the things that the guys do out there. These are check valves that we're looking at on a dilution water pump in the control building. And they were really old check valves, and they do fail just like anything else, and they were starting to leak. So we ordered a couple of them and the guys were putting them in. Again, it's kind of hard to see with the light as is, but they're cutting the old check valves out of the system. And there they have the new ones installed in the system, they're getting ready to button everything back up again. This is a yearly project that we do, the screw pumps, and everybody, it's one of the more noticeable things about the plant. Everybody notices the screw pumps there, and those are the lift pumps that bring all of the wastewater into the plant, at the head of the plant. Every year we take those down, clean all the grit and sand out of the bottom of it. And again, you can't really see down there, but... And again, you can't really see down there, but there's a bearing set in the very bottom, and we go through and make sure all the tolerances are still good there, we don't have any unnatural wear, make sure all the bolts are tightened down, and nothing's gonna come loose when we need it, so.
Wes, with those screw pumps, am I correct that, once that lifts the water, or the wastewater up, then the water itself flows through the plant?
Yeah, yeah. It's gravity all the way through the plant, yeah. I mean, there's, there's pumps in certain places, but the wastewater itself moves through the plant by gravity after that point. This is the ultraviolet disinfection system that we put in. What you see here is the guys, this is a springtime photo, they are taking the unit out of its winterization, and they're basically adding the cleaner, they put the bulbs back in, the sleeves that the bulbs go in. And right here in this particular picture, there, there's a wiping, a cleaning unit that's, that's on this that you can't see in the, in the photograph, but it, it's filled with a, a cleaner that cleans the quartz tubes that the bulbs set in, and it's just part of the process of putting it back together. They do the reverse in the wintertime. That's all I got. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Comment time, any city worker, folks, you all good? BPA folk? You're a BPA. I didn't see you behind.
Sure, I'd like to first congratulate the, the Brian bowling team on their win at state. Great job. Congratulate the Brian swim team members for their great job at state. Like to congratulate the artists that received silver and gold keys at the Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards. Great job, and wish the Brian basketball team best of luck in sectionals. Thank you, Wes. And Tyson, you guys do a great job for the city, and that's all I got.
Echo the same thing. I must've read my notes, so I'm, I'm not gonna waste a lot of time, other than, I do wanna say, Wes and, and Tyson, great job. Can't say enough about you and your employees, and, and the things that you do, and how much we appreciate what you do, so, thank you very much.
I have a few things. First, also, thank you, Wes and Tyson. I think sometimes we don't think about some of these things until they give the reports, or your toilet doesn't flush, or you don't have safe drinking water. We just take it for granted that these guys are doing their jobs, and we appreciate that very much. I'm glad that the deal with the BPA is finished, but now we need to move forward and work together to make this city better. It's good to see building permits back. We haven't had a lot of those this year, and it was nice to see, even if it's just storage, that there is some movement going on in Brian. As far as the DORA, as you could tell just from the comments tonight, somebody's not gonna be happy, no matter what this council does. So just please bear with us, and know that we try to do our very best up here. Do we always make the right decisions? No, but we're trying. So, that's all we can say. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
I will echo the other three, and thank Tyson and Wes, and other than that, that's all of the callers, John?
Ms. Lori?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rhonda?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ma'am?
I unfortunately do have a couple things, but they're important. WETCO is having their annual meeting and awards luncheon on March 31st from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. Love to have any city department heads, council, and BPA to join us. And afterwards is a civic pride workshop, which this gentleman is, from my understanding, very blunt, but is in a revitalize or die mode, specifically speaking about downtowns. So certainly, I would encourage all of you to attend that as well, if you can fit that in your day. It is at the Veterans Building in Montpelier. If you would like to go, please let Natasha know, 'cause the city will cover your $20 fee as a council member, and we hope you can join us that day. Also, another thing for your calendar, April 1st, Williams County will be celebrating their 200th year, and so at 5:00 p.m. at the bandstand pavilion at courthouse, there will be ceremony and celebration for that. If there is inclement weather, they will move that to the second floor of the courthouse, with the third floor being overflow, 'cause you can look down. So I'd love to have all of you that can attend celebrate the county's 200th year and anniversary, and-
That was April 1st, at what time?
April 1st at 5:00 p.m. That's a Wednesday. I too would like to thank, again, all the department heads, specifically Wes and Tyson, since they had to give up and, and get up and give their annual speeches. Also, would like to thank Sergeant Beers, Patrolman Doctor, and Cheapsiders for coming out late at night and ushering the girls' state championship bowling team. I personally got my first ride in the fire truck, which was really fun, but we had a great time ushering the girls in and celebrating their victory, so, thank you.
Tyson and Wes, kudos. So I was saying to Tyson earlier, 7:30 this morning, I saw him on top of a bucket with about a two-and-a-half, a three-foot river going underneath it there on Fountain Grove, right, yeah. So, thank you for doing that, and as I looked up, I saw a river coming from a farmer's field. So, that took guts just to even go into that. So what you do is much, much appreciated. And I echo the same sentiments as, as everyone else, and as it relates to all the teams, and how well they have done. Also, the, I appreciate the comments, and I believe Judy is correct, this has generated quite a bit of discussion, both pro and con. I don't know what the other people are getting, but I'm getting just about 50/50, actually. So, thank you very much for coming, and we will-
Take a short recess.
Take a short recess and go into an executive session for acquisition of property and appointment of personnel.
Thank you.
I do. Hold on.